Good evening. Thank you. Welcome for coming. Thank you for coming. Welcome to the July 24th council meeting. I'm showing that it's 7:37 PM. Mrs. Arcisi, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Ms. Hanekin?
Here.
Mr. Molner?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
Thank you. I would like to ask everyone to stand as council president. Dave Engel leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which I will do tonight's invocation.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all of us who are gathered here today and the many blessings you have bestowed upon our city. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give an assurance of what you -- what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Macedonia. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen. All right, we have some minutes. Do we have any changes to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the minutes as prepared by the clerk.
Can I say that I have not been able to review these minutes because there are over thirty pages and I don't have -- I had to go back to video to look for some. I'd like to delay the approval of the minutes if we can.
I'm happy to withdraw the motion.
Without a motion, we'll move forward to acknowledgement of the financial report. Do I have a motion to accept that?
Motion to accept the financial report.
I would ask that that be removed. The report was just presented late. Okay. It's 5:24 today. I haven't had time.
On the agenda, is the May?
The May one.
Is the May one? Not the June one.
Okay, good.
And the May one was sent out a while ago.
Yes, it was.
I don't -- if you notice on the agenda, it's just on the May --
I thought we were trying to do the one we just got.
The May 31st.
Okay, motion to accept the May 31st financial report.
So I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Moving on, the next portion is comments by the public. We ask that you please come to the microphone at the front here, state your name, address, and please try and limit your dissertation to five minutes. First on the list is Joseph Miglerini.
Mayor, I reserve some time at the very end. I just have my own comments.
What?
The very end of the meeting?
No, the very end of all the other ones.
All the others, all right. Next is Terry Hudek. Come on up, Terry.
Hello, everybody. I'm here again this evening to give an announcement and an invitation. The Manor House, we are having another fundraiser. It is going to be August 17th, this time at Coste Di Angelo, just around the corner. And it's going to be from 12 to four o'clock. It's on a Sunday afternoon. And the price for the adults will be $10, and then children 12 and under will be $5. And we do need all the help we can get financially. And as we all know, the Manor House has been put on the national list in Washington, DC, historical. So again, I want to just thank you all very kindly for all your help, and may God bless each and every one of us here tonight and all of our families. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the list is John Hartman. John?
Yeah, hello, council. My name's John Hartman. I reside at 9474 Shepherd Road, and I'm here to address you today on a concern with my -- the end of my driveway, my curb. I currently have a pretty steep incline, and I tend to bounce off my driveway when I'm pulling in and out of it. I've had issues with cars actually swerving around me because of the speed I have to back in and out of it and the low visibility I have on incoming traffic to one side of me. And, you know, I've tried to address the issue on a few occasions, and I'm looking more for clarification on next steps forward from the Service Department or whichever department would be necessary to take care of this issue.
Well, I certainly agree with you because, John, just imagine doing that after open heart surgery. Low curbs are not good. They really, really aren't. We have them throughout the city. It makes it very, very difficult on all of us. I know that, and I understand exactly what you're talking to because I do the same thing. Jim, do we have any plans in the future to address this?
I spoke to his mother-in-law, and I told her there's one way that we can help. It's a road curb. It's been there since 1994. There's nothing we can do about the curb. I'd have to replace almost 4,000 feet, and I don't think the city will do that. But we can help you with your apron raised about an inch. There's a way to saw cut this stuff. You could saw cut the curb on an angle to maybe eliminate some of the drastic hump that you have there. As I explained to your mother-in-law, what I will do for you is I will get our saw cutting man, and we'll go out there and we'll see what we can do. Might even come to the point where you might have to take part of your apron and change it to adjust it to where we put the curb. So if you would just give us some time to do that. JD Saw Cutting is who we use, and we've had to do that for other residents in the past. They've paid for it, the residents themselves, but we get it at a very good price for you that if you went by yourself, you wouldn't be able to get, but we'll be able to get you a very reasonable price, and that's how we'll be able to help you. If you give us a week or two, we'll be able to address it for you.
Yeah, that was all I was going to ask for clarification, not a timeline, but...
Yeah, you're probably looking at a week or two. We have a lot of projects that are coming up, you know, just trying to coordinate everything.
And you'll be able to respond to me directly?
Well, what I'll be able to do is I will be able to get you the people that'll be able to take care of you and help you, and then you'll be able to coordinate with them and do whatever it takes to make it more -- make it more easy or easier for you to pull in and out.
Great, okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
John, mine went the other way. It went down. I ended up having it pumped up three times. Three different times they had to do it, so...
That's rough. I think my baby thinks it's a roller coaster.
No extra chairs.
My wife, not so much, my pregnant wife.
No, okay. But believe me, open heart surgery is the worst because you're in bad shape, and those curbs are a problem. Okay, John, thanks.
Thank you for your time, council.
Joe, would you like to speak now?
No, I'm fine. Thank you, mayor. Other than the fact that just it's nice to be here and watch what's going on in the city, thank you for this opportunity.
All right, now, at the bottom of the list, I have Fred Quigley. Fred, are you going to talk tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
But as it is listed on that thing, I am the last one to speak.
Oh, I see.
I am the flagpole man. I lived at 8581 Alexis Drive in the Villas of Teramina, Macedonia, Ohio. My presentation to the council at the last meeting was planned to be my last presentation. I anticipated just moving on to the next phase. However, it seems that some culprit shared my presentation with Joe Miglerini. I only shared a hard copy with five members of council and the mayor, but somehow Joe got it. Joe is doing his best to stand in the way of my relaxed and hoped-for enjoyment of the fruits of my labors in my retirement at the age of 80. First, Joe tried to deny me the right to fly an American flag on a flagpole in my own front yard, which ended up going viral on the internet in the U.S. and around the world. When all was said and done, I was allowed to keep my flagpole. But now he is telling me that I can't enjoy my constitutional First Amendment rights of free speech. He does this through misrepresentation of my words and of -- or my intent and his own view and/or interpretation of what he imagines I have said. Following is a letter that I have received. It's a letter from the attorney, from Joe Miglerini. I have been retained by Joseph Miglerini regarding your false allegations and continued harassment, along with other related issues within the Villas of Teramina in the city of Macedonia. It has been brought to our attention by others that you have, on various occasions, made public statements about Mr. Miglerini that are defamatory and slanderous in nature. These injurious remarks were clearly made to persuade others that my client was dishonest, et cetera. Your actions are reckless and represent a malicious disregard of the truth, and as such, you have violated the defamation laws of the state of Ohio. You have personally disseminated information which is misleading. This conduct has caused my client time and money for which you may be liable. Also, your comments that Mr. Miglerini considers the showing of the American flag as being a mere decoration unsightly and/or detrimental to the appearance of the development is a blatant attempt to ruin his reputation. You may wish to immediately seek leave of council so that you can make necessary retractions and minimize the damage that you have already caused through your libelous and slanderous statements. In the meantime, we will continue to investigate and gather affidavits as to what make a decision of whether to pursue a legal remedy. You are not only seeking restrictions of your previous remarks, but putting you on notice that if you continue to make derogatory and defamatory statements regarding Mr. Miglerini or the Villas of Teramina project, they will be confirmation of your injurious intent, and we will have no choice but to bring action against you for this. If Miglerini and Mayor Kutschka continues to bring this type of malicious, frivolous, defamatory, slanderous, and unreasonable attacks against me, just like he did with the neighbors during the flag episode, I will be forced to continue my efforts to deal with those who are being nasty, uncaring, unprofessional to the elderly and to the handicapped in the Villas. As to published statements of defamatory and slanderous nature, in my letter of 12, June 12th, I dealt with just the facts of what is happening to me and to my neighbor, Al Bell. As to dishonesty, these are Mr. Miglerini's words, not mine. Facts are facts. He is the one disregarding the truth. For example, Joe told the residents at the meeting that the city requires a three-foot offset at the rear of the property. I checked with the building department at the time. No such rule exists. He told, and untruth. There are others that I could quote. As to malicious disregard of the truth, who is the one being malicious? Sending me this letter is itself malicious. And whose truth? As I said, I have related just the facts as I see them. As to violating the defamation laws of the state of Ohio, what about my U.S. constitutional First Amendment right of free speech that he is violating? On top of that, council encourages comments from the public. I just responded to that opportunity, and that is what I gave, my comments of how I see actions and reactions playing out in the city of Macedonia. As to the American flag as being a mere decoration, unsightly or a detriment to the appearance of the development, these are Mr. Miglerini's words in his rules and regulations, not mine. As to my injurious intent, again, Mr. Miglerini's words, not mine. Is he capable of reading my mind? My intent has been expressed from the very beginning when Joe tried to deny me my right to fly the American flag on a flagpole, and his unfounded accusations are expressed in numerous previous comments. And then, as a bully, I'll show you, he denied me six or seven times the right to build a deck behind my house, all for different reasons. Also, the last paragraph of my letter dated June 12th, I said, "Get off my back or buy me out, and I'll be gone." Then came along Al with his sore problem with Chris and Joe. At this point, I became pastoral. I was concerned about the little guy. My intent became fighting Joe the millionaire against Al the commoner. Unless Miglerini gets involved with some common sense and some compassion, using Joe's Mig words to me on TV, if Mr. Miglerini, instead of Mr. Quigley, could see reason. See reason, Mr. Miglerini. Be reasonable. Buy me out on my terms and to my satisfaction, and I'll be gone, and you can continue to run Macedonia any way you want. My final comment, maybe the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. A copy of the attorney's letter went to none other than Mayor Donald Kutschka. I guess I know who that culprit is now. Yes, Mr. Kutschka himself. And now it is Mayor Donald Kutschka, I guess, who knew what was going on all the time. And it's unlikely -- and now it is unlikely to end unless council can get the mayor and Mr. Rigley -- and Mr. Miglerini to see reason and to do what is right -- what is the right thing for all concerned, the city, Mr. Miglerini, for me, and for my old neighbor, Al Bell, with his sore problems. Mr. Miglerini caused this problem. He should be responsible to end it for the peace and the welfare of all. That's my record of my facts.
Any documentation that passes over my desk, Fred, is public record. Any documentation, our law director can verify that for you. In fact, you're on public record right now because it was all taken.
I know I am on public record. I know I'm on TV because people are calling and telling me this.
I'm not fighting with you. I'm just explaining to you, this is all public record, okay? So we don't need to debate it. I've already given you ten minutes.
Well, I know that, but I wrote my name down twice.
I see. Smart. That's smart.
The letter, the letter, it was carbon copy, or a copy, went to you, which means you were involved and related to all of this.
Well, absolutely. As mayor, I'm involved in everything that happens, Fred.
Well, you haven't done that every other time that I've talked to you.
Okay, we're going to move on with...
No, we cannot.
I can't deny it to him. He's a public citizen.
You can't, even though I said I'm the last person on that list.
Well, you don't determine that, Fred.
What?
You don't determine who's last on the list. He has to be last.
Excuse me, the dictator Miglerini doesn't mind, thank you. Now I know exactly where I stand at the city.
Thank you, mayor, council. I'm not going to stand up here and try to address all the issues that Mr. Quigley has so misinformed, misstated and misinformed again this audience. But nevertheless, I just want to talk about the Villas of Teramina. Villas of Teramina is an active adult community. I started the project in 2007. We have, currently, we're close to getting to nearly close to 50 homes being built in there. We have a wide variety of people that are moving in from Hudson, from Solon, from Highland Heights. They absolutely just love the community. They all follow the rules and regulations that they signed off on when they came into the subdivision, those covenants and restrictions as it relates to either flags or landscaping or whatever the case is. And they follow those rules and regulations. They don't just sign them and then deny or then not follow them. They follow the rules and regulations. So I appreciate the fact that we have a great number of nice people that live in the community. I'm sorry that Mr. Quigley has such a negative attitude as he does, but I also need to tell you that our builder, which is Chris Coplins, he's another Macedonia resident, Coplins Homes, he's done a very good job. I don't have anything to do with building homes in the subdivision. Those homes are contracted directly between Coplins Homes and the individual homeowner. I own the lots. I sell the lots to either the individual homeowner, and then Chris ultimately then builds the home. So in Mr. Quigley's situation, he dealt directly with Coplins Homes. His neighbor who he's talking about, which is Al Bell, he dealt directly and contracted directly with Chris Coplins, not with Joe Miglerini. No, not with Joe Miglerini. The contracts are avail... Mr. Quigley?
I'm sorry.
I didn't interrupt you while you were speaking. Did I jump up and say anything while you were speaking? So could you please give me the courtesy of not doing the same to me? Thank you. So if anybody would like to check the records, they could certainly see that that's the case and that I have nothing to do with the building of the homes. Again, I would invite anyone to come to the Villas of Teramina, speak with all of the residents that do live in there. It's a very nice community. Everybody does get along with each other. It's a very, very nice community, and that's about as much as I possibly can say about it, contrary to those statements that are being made by Mr. Quigley. So thank you for this opportunity.
All right.
I'm not the one who's watching on the screen, yelling at everybody against me.
Now, let's move into pending and/or new legislative items, starting with ordinance number 45-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 45-2014 for a third reading by title only.
An emergency ordinance providing for the review of the charter by the Charter Review Commission fixing its duties and establishing a procedure for the review.
Before we ask to pass and post, if I may, there was a lot of discussions about conversations I had with you, Joe, or let you know my feelings about legislations. Do you feel that this legislation is accurate because it was not written by you?
No, it is not accurate.
And in which way?
It is not consistent with the way we've done it the past 20 years, every five years. It calls for things that have never been called for before, like each council person being given an opportunity to appoint someone. It is inaccurate as far as the time periods that they put on for the Charter Review Commission to act and pass it as an ordinance. It's not accurate as it relates to the number of members needed to put it on the ballot. That's about it.
Did you mention at all that the mayor did not have a chance to veto who was chosen? Because that was a topic of discussion.
I explained that in the past, when the mayor authorized council members to make suggestions, that the mayor and council would make a joint decision as to who each council person was nominating or putting on there, that your opportunity to do that is being taken away in this section. The charter says the mayor and council have the right to appoint, not individual council persons.
All right, well, we have some amendments to this tonight, so we'll proceed from this point, and then you can see if we're falling within those restrictions.
Well, I drafted for you the way we've done it in the past and the proper way to do it. Those are on the agenda as well, but I'll do as you wish.
Well, the thing is, if these amendments don't address all the issues you feel it has, then the other two pieces of legislation do, then it would be your recommendation to go with those, correct?
The best way to correct all of the inaccuracies inconsistent with the charter and Ohio Code is to adopt the ones that I drafted, not the ones that Sillie drafted.
Okay, may I proceed?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend the following words in the following sections of this ordinance, 45-2014. The last sentence in Section 1 says that seven days from the passage that we will have the commission members convoked, I have -- I am asking to modify those words to 30 days. In Section 6, and this is per the comments from Mr. Deemer, I am requesting that we change the words after "upon the least" on the first page under Section 6, from three fifths to two thirds. And in Section 6, in the last part of that sentence, again, changing from three fifths to two thirds. In Section 7, I'm asking that we change the number of months from three months to six months after appointment. The commission would serve for that period. That is, those are the amendments that I'm requesting to the language in this item. And let me say that I have spoken to a number of former council members, and uniformly they have said that the mayor has not had the opportunity to veto, and we did not make joint appointments. They indicated that the mayor appointed his representative, and they reappointed their own representative. And so Mr. Deemer's interpretation seems to be based on the change this year in who's on the council. So if I could say that, then let's go. I have made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You're not the mayor.
My God.
The mayor calls a second. Can I make one request on these amendments? Section 1, we really need to delete the whole bottom sentence after being appointed. That has never been done in the past. We have never set a time limit. We have never asked for voter registration. We have never asked for proof of residence. The other thing is the language, I think, in the ordinance that traditionally is used for the beginning part of Section 1 is a little more what the language of the charter states, that it says, "Consist of seven members, one who shall be a member of council, six who shall be residents, all of whom shall be registered voters, and all of whom shall be appointed by the mayor and council." It doesn't go into council gets to appoint a person, and mayor puts appoint a person. None of that was ever addressed in the charter and stated that way. That's an interpretation.
That has been in practice since it was these charter commissions.
But that's your interpretation, and I, you know...
The interpretation of other council members I spoke to.
Plus, there's nothing in the one that came from the Law Department that talks about a veto, so I'm not sure where that came from.
What veto?
That's never been a discussion in the one that the Law Department drafted. But I would amend that we get rid of that entire last... But I would amend that we get rid of that entire last sentence from after being appointed, and providing proof of residence and voter registration, and then seven days or 30 days. You know, you've got a committee of people who take this extremely seriously, the one I served on and the ones after that. These aren't people who take it lightly, so I think, you know, you appoint the right people, it goes forward without any issues. You know, you're putting a lot of ifs, ands, and buts here.
I just don't understand why we have to have the "you write" at Sylvia instead of interpretation by our law department, as it has been in the past.
Well, the interpretation by the law department is actually what I used as the basis for this. I went to the ordinances, and I picked up the 2009 ordinance. I am more specific confirming what has been the practice, which is the council appoints each member that they have, and you appoint a member. And as far as the length of time, 30 days. I had seven days there originally because I wanted to see us move forward with it for the November election, that's clearly not possible. But I also would like this to be able to be done within six months, so I thought that 30 days would be reasonable for convoking the Charter Review Commission. That gives people several, you know, 30 days to confirm their appointments and to get everybody together, so I think that's reasonable.
Mr. Deemer, the 30-day rule provision that Sylvia is discussing, or Ms. Hanekin is discussing, that wouldn't be precluded by other ordinances in the city or precluded by charter, would you agree with that?
The charter does not state that they have to convene within 30 days to be appointed.
Well, I understand that, but the fact that the charter is, leaves that out, it would seem to be that then the city could adopt a rule that says we're going to start this within 30 days and not violate charter. Would you agree with that, Mr. Deemer?
Can you supplement the charter by ordinance to require it to be done within a time period agreed to than the charter does? I'm not sure of that.
Well, the charter doesn't address that at all.
Yeah.
So it would be, it would seem that the charter, when the charter doesn't address something, it would seem that then legislation can be brought up. So the question is, since the charter does not address that issue, wouldn't it be a violation of charter to say we want to start within 30 days?
Council shall adapt its own rules, it says right here.
You can adopt your own rules, which is impossible.
I know.
But the charter requirements are.
Right, I understand that.
I'm not sure, it's possible that you could add that requirement as being reasonable, but what happens if they don't comply with it? I don't know what the repercussions would be.
Supreme Court had that issue with the legislature and the school board taxes four times, right? So hopefully we won't have to address that.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and amendments that are on the floor right now. Do I have a second?
Well, I have a question. What are we doing about what Jan wants to do?
I'm just asking to remove that entire last sentence.
Yes. But I have a motion saying that, as I understand it, my motion is now just saying we want to change it to 30 days, that's all.
Okay.
All right, yeah, okay.
Does your motion also approve the change from three fifths to two thirds?
Yes, correct.
Maybe what we need to do is do one subject at a time, I know it's more tedious.
Your amendment is changing, the only thing you're changing in there is from seven to 30 days.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Who is going to be validating the proof of residence and voter registration that you are now asking folks to present, that they didn't have to in the past?
Well, I thought that it could be done either by the commission itself, that people, when the meeting is, can vote, they can bring that, proof of registration, or we could have the clerk do it.
Well, usually there's a piece of legislation that appoints the members, which is the second piece of legislation that the law department had composed, which identifies the people that are going to be named to the committee.
Okay.
So would you ask, because we've never done this before, never have had a need to do it, I don't see there was any abuse in all the years that the Charter Review has happened, so I'm not sure why it's there. How are you going to implement it? Because you could have this go infinitum if you appoint someone that's not, or can't find this, or can't find that. I mean, you're setting a 30-day limit. How do you work that into your process?
Okay, I've just suggested two ways, we could either have the clerk validate that, have them, have the name submitted, and it validated by the clerk. There's an easy way to check if you're a registered voter and you're a resident, and, or we could have people come to the meeting, the first meeting with that information. Either way, it would work.
And what is proof of residence? You need to be very specific. Do I get my mail to live there, or is it a utility bill, or is it my?
It could be the same as it is.
Home mortgage bill, I mean, you can't just put a word there and not have specifics behind it.
All right, okay.
But when you register your kids at school, you've got to take everything but the kitchen sink there.
But if you're a registered voter, they do have your voting address, and that should constitute proof of residence, because you can't be a registered voter in Macedonia unless you.
I would dispute that, based on my daughter moved and never changed her residence and still shows on her rolls as a registered voter.
I understand, but she won't be appointed to the charter.
She didn't follow up on it, so she doesn't vote, but.
We're probably not going to vote, we're not going to appoint people out of town.
I think it's easier if you just remove that sentence and not worry about it, otherwise you need to put some work controls around it.
The sentence, if I may, Jan, I think Sylvia took it from the actual charter that talks about the qualifications.
Yes, I did.
It would seem to me that since it's in the charter, we really would not need it in this piece of legislation, because it's already charter required, so maybe as a way to find a compromise on this one issue, we would, maybe the amendment could be that just about the Charter Review Commission will meet no later than 30 days after the passage of this ordinance.
Okay, I can do that.
We will.
Does that work, Jan?
Yes.
So you're removing all the language, because the person who appoints them really has the illness.
Right.
To make sure they're registered voter, we have in the past.
Okay.
Tell me to be quiet when you want me to. We'll start with after Charter Review, we'll start crossing that out, and then where it says members will be, and we'll say the first session of Charter Review will commence no later than 30 days from the passage of this ordinance.
So delete.
So you're looking at the end of August.
Right.
Does that bring up a timing of appointments?
Well.
Do we have a meeting within 30 days for appointments?
Yeah, but we're because you don't have a meeting, your next meeting, you're on summer recess, so.
We're in summer recess before, we're back before summer.
Yeah. Ms. Tully just asked about the appointments.
Right, but we would be back by the end of August to make our appointments and get them off.
And your anticipation is that, no, there'll be just a 1, 2, 3, yes, on the vote? My concern is, you're saying 30 days from the day you pass it, if you pass it today, that's 30 days. Do we have enough time then to make our appointments, get that read, 1, 2, 3, and approve, so that these people are following the letter of the law that is set in this ordinance? I don't want to set the commission up to fail either.
Well, I don't either, so that's why I was making the suggestion, if you suggest a different time, then we can talk about it, but I don't see why 30 days is an issue.
Well, logically, logically, we're making all these amendments and changes when further on in the agenda is two pieces of legislation that would just appoint the Charter Commission as it has been since the city's inception.
Okay, I will be perfectly happy to do as you're suggesting, Dave, and we can change the number to 36, so it's past the August 28 meeting. Is that satisfactory?
Why even have a timeline?
Well, I understand, but I'm offering to put it beyond that date, and people will be appointing their members, I'm sure, sometime well prior to that.
Why don't you make it 45, because that gives time for any discussion. 30 days puts us beyond, today's the 24th, that 24th, we don't have a meeting again until the 28th of August, so if you're going to do it, make it 45 days, that way you have ample time for any discussion.
Okay, 45 days it is.
Okay, so.
If I may, could I?
Please, I'm sorry.
Could I repeat what, okay, I move that we, I move that we amend the language in Section 1 to say the following, deleting the words after being appointed and providing proof of residence and voter registration, and beginning the sentence with, "The Charter Review Commission members will be convoked into session by Charter Review Commission council member no later than 45 days after the passage of this ordinance." And, in Section 6, we change three fifths in both places to two thirds, and in Section 7, the Charter Review Commission will, excuse me, the change will be from three months to six months. Okay? So do we have, if I, that's the amendment that I'm proposing, and?
I'll make a second.
Okay.
All right, we have an amendment and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? I'd just like to bring up one more point, this ordinance, this piece of legislation got its first reading in April, and it's now several months later, and still at the last minute we're making changes, when all's we have to do is pass ordinances created by our law department consistent with what has happened in the past. With that being said, what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance 45-2014 according to law.
Second.
No, I was just going to say, as amended.
Again, the Section 1 first sentence is changing what has been done in the past, is now each council person will have their own nominee or the commission, you will not have a say so on that according to this one, so, just so you understand.
I think, though, in the past, I understand what you're saying, Joe, but I think in the past, that's how we have done it.
Yeah.
Well, if it's been that way in the past, what's wrong with the past legislation?
That's all I'm saying.
Doesn't work.
Because we're just being specific.
Because now you can discuss those appointees before they are made. If you're not happy with one of the appointments, you can veto the whole legislation, and they will need four votes to override you. So that's the predicament you're putting the city in by wording it this way. You're better off debating the appointees now, rather than vetoing it because you don't like one or two or three appointments.
But I think what council, some members of council are saying, that in the past there's been no debate, everyone, the way we've done it in the past is everyone puts their name in, and nobody complains about it, and we deal with it.
Yeah, but the mayor wasn't obligated to not complain about it, they all made agreements with each other.
I don't know what the agreement was, other than name your person.
The mayor went along with whoever was being named.
Which apparently he doesn't want to do this time.
I don't know that.
Well.
Saying this is new language, it's not consistent with the charter.
So in other words, it will create that problem, that's the only reason we're debating this.
Well, I thought, Mayor, you, I thought Mr. Deemer had told me that that's what you wanted to do, you wanted to have the right to object to who council may name, and then you're saying, you said in work session, no, no, you didn't want to object to that, that wasn't your problem, so I'm totally confused at this point on that issue.
In the work session, I said that our law directors created legislation consistent with the way we've always done it, and that's the only objection I have to this, because this ordinance has been debated for several months, and it's still being debated tonight, and all's we have to do is pass the other two pieces, and I don't see where there would be any problem. Are we kind of hinting that there might be somebody that's appointed that I wouldn't want?
No.
Because every citizen has a right to serve, I don't see myself vetoing somebody.
All I was reporting was that Mr. Deemer had said that to me, or at least that's how I interpreted it, and then I asked you tonight in work session, and you said, no, Mr. Deemer was wrong, you didn't want to have the right to object to whoever people on council vote, so.
I said that was Mr. Deemer's interpretation.
Well, what's your opinion? That's, I guess.
Dave, what I said was that the changes that have been created here are contrary to the charter, and gave you an example of that, why it's contrary, that the mayor and council have always agreed, if the mayor didn't agree with somebody you want to appoint the last night, five years ago, or whenever, you probably would say, okay, I'll now name somebody else, and then the mayor agrees with you. So in this situation, you're mandating it by law that he has to accept whoever you nominate, and that's not what the charter says. So, I mean, there may be no problem, I'm just saying, if the mayor accepts everyone's appointments and he's not unhappy with it, you won't veto the other things.
Okay.
One of your recommendations then be that this Charter Review Commission, when they get to Section number 13, look to see if they want to add all these, so we're not into interpretations every five years of whoever's sitting in the council D S.
Sure, that's a good idea.
If you're on here, you've got to address this, because otherwise, depends on who sits up here in five years of how this charter goes.
Let's vote.
Hasn't been a problem for 25 years, so I don't know why.
I, there is a, I moved to pass and post, was there a second?
I did.
He did.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrell.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
After listening to everything, the one fact that I'm bothered by is, I got this amendment today at 6:30, I didn't have a chance to really commit some thought to this, and that's my hangup right now, is I don't really know which way I want to go, so I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Tully.
Yes. I think it's important we start this procedure, but I caution that we continue to put on our own interpretations and rules and regulations. This is for the people to work, not the five of us up here.
Moving on to ordinance number 47-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance 47-2014, excuse me, where am I at here?
For the third reading.
I move that we, I'm offering for a third reading ordinance number 47-2014 by title only.
An emergency ordinance amending Sections 18103A, 18104, 18106A, and 18114A of the codified ordinances of the City of Macedonia, Ohio, in order to increase the city's current income tax rate to that which existed last year, 2013, at two and a half, two and one quarter percent, excuse me, for road improvements and stormwater projects, and providing for the 100 percent resident tax credit, and submitting the same to the electors on November 4th, 2014.
All right, I'd just like to state that all this really does is it does not institute this tax, it allows it to go to the ballot. So with that being said, what's your pleasure?
I move we pass and post ordinance number 47-2014 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrell.
No.
Mr. Engel.
Taxes are always one of the hardest things to vote on, they're, obviously, everyone has an opinion, and they certainly affect everyone in the city to different degrees, whether it's an income tax or a real estate tax. In this particular case, it's an income tax, and we're told that people who live in the Macedonia and work outside of the city, their credit is going to be increased, and so only the people who are really going to be affected are those people who are paying, who actually live in the city and work in the city, or those people who work in the city only, and their income tax is going to be increased. I think that sets up a lot of division and friction. If everybody's going to be taxed, we all should be taxed equally, and I- If everybody's going to be taxed, we all should be taxed equally, and, and I, I have a problem with that. The mayor has said that this isn't for, vote for the taxes, it's just allowing citizens to vote. I understand, there's a little bit of logic with that. I also understand that some people say that people who are elected to council have an obligation to investigate, evaluate, educate themselves, and make a determination. And by voting for a tax, you're, in essence, endorsing that tax and saying to the citizen there, we need that tax. The city is, your business or your family can always use more money, there's no, that's a given, but there's also an obligation to live within your means. We have, we have a plan that, that I felt when we passed the three-year tax, I guess four or five years ago, whatever it was, that was going to allow us to move forward, and I think it has allowed us to move forward. And as, when the rec tax falls off, I think we'll be even a better position. The taxes are rebounding much more than what Rita projected. And so, we're, this is a moving target at this point, and I am not convinced that the taxes, an increase of taxes, are within the best interest of the City of Macedonia. And I, I'm not going to take the easy ride out and say, I'll let the citizens decide. I think people voted for Dave Engel because they wanted Dave Engel to make decisions, they wanted Dave Engel to educate himself, and if they don't like the decisions, well, then vote Dave Engel out, or whomever you don't like who's making the decisions. But I'm not one of the persons who says, I'll just pass the buck. It reminds me, and I'm not here to talk religion, of Pilot in the Bible, when he said, this is what I'm going to decide, but I'm washing my hands. It's really your decision. I, I can't, I can't live with that. So I'm voting no.
Ms. Hannekin?
I normally don't speak this long, but I do have something prepared on this topic because I have, when this year started, I was concerned based on the projected downturn that we were to have in our income taxes. But I felt that we needed to look at what the reality was, and we have done that. And so I'm going to be voting no, and I'd like to explain why. First, the increase is not needed. Macedonia income tax revenues have rebounded due to economic improvement. Macedonia's twenty-fourteen income tax revenues are much higher than projected, and revenues are actually less than a half a percent below twenty thirteen, and they're seventeen-point-three percent above twenty twelve income tax collections at this point. And in both of those cases, we had the extra quarter percent on. We don't have it on now, but we're still collecting at the level of revenues that we did when we had that quarter percent on. It is very likely that our revenues will be close to, it could be eight-point-two or eight-point-three million this year. This means we will likely have more than one-point-one million above the original Rita twenty-fourteen revenue projections. Two, maintaining our income tax, the two percent level, allows Macedonia to remain competitive in attracting new businesses and with surrounding, and be competitive with surrounding communities, because most of the other communities in our region are at the two percent income tax level. Going to a two-and-quarter percent tax would make us less attractive as a business destination and might depress our income tax revenues, since a lot of them come from net profits tax, from businesses. Third, the council is basically continuing our commitment to our residents, and especially to our working families, that we will not raise taxes unless they are urgently needed. And we have a two-and-a-half million dollar carryover this year, plus revenues that are well above projections, so there is no urgent need. We, in addition, we've talked a lot about road programs this year. We could add another road program, another road to our projects even this summer. We've decided not to do that from a timing standpoint, but it, but next year, we will, based on these projections, and it's likely to happen, that we'll be able to follow the commitments to roads and stormwater that are already been recommended by the Building and Engineering Department. We can anticipate, and, this is fifth, we can anticipate that twenty fifteen road and stormwater projects can be fully funded. Sixth, going forward, our debt load will be reduced by one-point-one million due to the completed payoff of the city hall and recreation center construction projects in two thousand and sixteen. This will free up one-point-one million in additional funds for required capital projects without a tax increase. Now, the last thing, and I think it's important, it is advisable to make a long-term commitment to capital projects by, by replacing the expiring quarter percent that is currently paying off the recreation center construction bonds with a continuing quarter percent tax dedicated to capital projects, including roads. That way, we can fund a long-term road program and critical capital investments for Macedonia, and still retain a maximum two percent income tax rate. So I'm very happy to say that we don't have to raise these taxes, and I'm voting no.
Mr. Mulner?
My thoughts on this are pretty simple. It's looking at where we're at now and having a plan. When I first came on council, we had a five-year plan. Quickly found out within one year that that five-year plan wasn't going to work, because we rely on income tax, and income tax fluctuates. We were quickly in a situation where we were faced with a deficit and we needed to lay off employees. Kind of gut-wrenching when you sit around and look at people you know and you work with every day, and the police that protect you, and the firemen that can save you, and the service department that serves you, and all the other employees, and say, we're going to lay you off. We don't have a plan for the future. This is all based on, well, we'll see how things go with taxes. To be exact and concise, we're down a half a percent from last year. When we talk about eight million dollars, it's not eight million, eight million dollars unencumbered, we're two and a half, and that's, can go pretty quickly. But one major thing I want to point out is, right now, we need a million-dollar ladder truck for our fire departments, the people that save lives. And we're saying, we don't know how we're going to fund that. It's a little concerning to me. This would have freed up money in the general fund to put, you know, funds into that so we can take care of these problems, and we, we have vehicles that are part of the safety committee to take care of people. Also, that doesn't include the thirty-three roads that are rated in poor condition. All this would have done was given the people a right to vote to say, yes, we want to put this on, or no, we don't. You get a hundred percent credit. The people that work in this community, drive on our streets, they can have a little piece of that, too, to where they can help pay for those streets. I don't think that's unfair. When we did this last time, a person making fifty thousand dollars paid about a hundred bucks extra a year. We're talking less than ten dollars a month. I don't like to give more than a dollar or anything for me that I have, but the reality is, that's a very small amount of money to help our problems. The people on Barkdale, Blueberry, Bonnie, Bradford, Brookdale, Bruce, Meadow Lawn, Roseland, Pendleton, Crowe, Driftwood, Highland, Valley View, Elizabeth, Firestone, Fox Hill, Merlin, Newport, North Melody, Robins, Sabrebrook, Shepherd, Skyland, Stone Ridge, Summer, Swallow, Twinsburg Road and Valley View Road and Waters Drive, you officially do not have a voice. This council has just told you that you are not allowed to vote, we're not going to put it in your hands to say, we're going to correct your problem. Thirty-three roads, do you know how long it takes to fix thirty-three roads? Two-point-five million dollars will probably take care of a couple of them. Don't forget about our ladder truck. Have a safe day. Yes.
Ms. Tully?
I think my visual says where my thought would be. The B-streets, I have talked about them for years, Barkdale, Bruce, Bonnie, the ones that y'all listed. This comes from Barkdale. I run those streets. I know the holes. I know where to try and go around the holes. Haven't touched those roads since the fifties. This is your opportunity to say whether you would be willing to pay more income tax or not. I'd have to pay it. I'm still working. My husband just got a part-time job. He'd have to pay it. And we're willing to do that, because we know the roads are what makes this community. There are a lot of houses up for sale, and a lot of them have pretty big holes in front of their yards. I think it's pretty difficult to get someone interested in buying your house if the road isn't fixed. We talked about we have more money, we have a two-and-a-half million dollar carryover. Just last month, we were told we can't spend a dime of that. Now, all of a sudden, we can open the purse strings. So we got two roads approved, and I'm very happy that we finally got the two worst approved. But we need to put together a plan of how we go in the future. And the talk has been by one council member of, well, we'll borrow money. We're not going to borrow money anymore. We want to put the money in the bank and set it aside. So the two-and-a-half million that we have today, you need to take a half a million, put it aside, not touch it for any unencumbered. Otherwise, you don't have a road program. But that only takes care of next year. What about the year after, and the year after? And if we have another winter, like we just had, we're looking at more roads being detrimental to our health. Let me real quick talk about the parks and rec. When the parks and rec expires, it is specifically for the parks and recs. You can't automatically renew it, it goes back to the voters. So before we, we talk about parks and recs and we'll just take their money and use it, it's kind of like when the half percent or the quarter percent expired, it's gone, unless you vote to put it back on. My vote is yes. I think this, you know, we have Dr. Jenkins who comes in and brings us little pieces of concrete where his wife has fallen. I think this says it better than anybody. My vote would be yes, and I apologize.
Moving on. Ordinance Number Fifty-Six dash Two Thousand and Fourteen.
I'd like to offer Ordinance Fifty-Six, Two Thousand and Fourteen, for its third reading by title only.
Second.
In ordinance, appropriating funds for use by, by the service department for the road repair at three-eight-three Janes Lane.
Nick, you want to explain this, please?
Yes, the, I had put this piece of legislation through for a strip patch on Janes Lane. The road's pretty much annihilated, it's gone, there's ravelling, it's just gone. In our talks, when we had our so-called windfall of money come in, we put some money in for strip patching, and we were able to add this into that project. So essentially, this will get completed. We're going to vote this down, but that will be completed in the strip patch program this year. So all we're doing is cleaning up what we have on here to say no to this piece of legislation, but it is on the docket to be completed this year. So I move that we pass and post, according to law, Ordinance Fifty-Seven, Two Thousand and Fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
No.
Mr. Engel?
No.
Ms. Hannekin?
No.
Mr. Mulner?
No.
And Ms. Tully?
No.
Moving on to Ordinance Number Fifty-Seven dash Two Thousand and Fourteen.
I'd like to offer Ordinance Fifty-Seven, Two Thousand and Fourteen, for its third reading by title only.
In ordinance, amending Twenty, the Twenty Fourteen Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number Twenty-Six Fourteen, transferring certain funds from One Oh-One One Oh-One to One Oh-One Two Oh-One.
I'd like to make an amendment to Ordinance Fifty-Seven. Scott, are we pulling that from the general fund, and this is funds for training in the service department?
Yes, sir, you just want to say you're going to increase Fund One Oh-One Two Oh-One Fifty-Five Seventy to fifteen hundred dollars, just to increase in appropriation for that.
And that dollar amount was fifteen hundred?
Yes.
All right. What he said.
Yeah. I figured. Now I just need a.
Second. Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And now, what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post, according to law, Ordinance Fifty-Seven, Two Thousand and Fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
And Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, Ordinance Sixty-Two, Two Thousand and Fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number Sixty-Two, Two Thousand and Fourteen, for its second reading by title only, please.
In ordinance, amending Sections One Twenty-One oh-two D, One Twenty-One oh-two Q, One Twenty-Three and One Twenty-Three oh-three of the codified ordinances of the City of Macedonia and Ohio, in order to conform with the most recent version of the charter.
And what's your pleasure?
It's only second.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right, next is Ordinance Sixty-Nine, Two Thousand and Fourteen.
I, well, I don't know.
This is, this is the Charter Review, since we've already.
I think motion to table, Ordinance Sixty-Nine, Two Thousand and Fourteen.
Second.
That'll get rid of it.
It's never been entered, offered.
Mr. Deemer, was it, was it offered, so please.
It can be withdrawn.
Well, it's up to the mayor. He has the right to introduce legislation. This is legislation he's proposing to be introduced, so not to introduce it and hold on it, hold it down if you like, or the mayor can leave it on the agenda to determine what he's going to do with the other ones.
I think we should call the question tonight.
What's the number, sixty-nine?
Sixty-nine.
Well, it's the first reading, if we read it.
Right.
I'd like to offer Ordinance Sixty-Nine, Two Thousand and Fourteen, for its first reading by title only.
In ordinance, providing for the review of the charter by the Charter Review Commission, fixing its duties and establishing procedure for the review.
Next is Resolution Number Seventy, Two Thousand and Fourteen.
I'd like to offer Resolution Number Seventy for its first reading by title only, please.
A resolution confirming the appointments to the Charter Review Commission.
Resolution Number Seventy-One, Two Thousand and Fourteen.
I'd like to offer Resolution Seventy-One, Two Thousand and Fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
A resolution declaring the month of August, twenty fourteen, Kids Month in the County of Summit.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post, according to law, Resolution Seventy-One, Two Thousand and Fourteen.
Second.
Roll call.
We did, we're second and third reading on it.
Roll call.
I know. Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, Resolution Number Seventy-Two, Two Thousand and Fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Resolution Number Seventy-Two, Two Thousand and Fourteen, for its first reading by title only. I, I, wait, I want, I want, we're going to discuss some of this stuff out here since we don't have time. I think.
Well, if we want to just, yeah, if you want to discuss.
Because that one, Scott, can you help us out on Number Seventy-Two, Two Thousand and Fourteen before I, because how important is it to?
That's in engineering, Nick, you want to address that?
We need to get that in, right?
Yeah, that's, basically, that's what allows the Public Works Commission to cover fifty percent of your construction share for the A-two-phase-three project. It's to authorize the mayor to apply for grant on it through the Ohio Public Works Commission.
So, third reading.
So, so we need to do third reading on that, correct, Nick? All right. Can I take that back now? Okay, I'd like to offer Resolution Number Seventy-Two, Two Thousand and Fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
A resolution allowing the mayor to take steps necessary to ensure local funding participation with the Ohio Public Works Commission with regard to the widening and resurfacing, including drainage improvements and traffic control signals, further identified as PID eighty-one sixty, eighty-one six-five-six, with the county, county route section numbers sum, State Route Eighty-two, four-point-six-five, and declaring an emergency.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I offer that we pass and post, or, Resolution Number Seventy-Two, Two Thousand and Fourteen, according to law, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, Resolution Number Seventy-Three, Two Thousand and Fourteen.
The resolution.
The resolution, actually, I'd like some interpretation of this also, Nick, or Scott, as to what we're actually doing here.
I can do that, if you don't mind hearing from the law department. This is our resolution. In order to take land that's necessary for any public improvement, you have to follow the Ohio Revised Code statutory proceedings for condemnation or eminent domain. This is the first step in doing it, and that's to declare the necessity and intention for it. So, when you just passed the ordinance for the grant, applying for the grant, this is also an action of council that's necessary in order to go to the next step, and that is to make offers for the land that's needed and allow ODOT and their appointees to pay the money and negotiate prices for parts of land that's needed for the project. Once this is done, then we can proceed to the next step, and if we don't settle with a number of people, there will be other legislation to come forward and take the next step for acquiring.
Okay, so-
This is part of the normal process.
We, just to clarify, Mr. Deemer, we are not actually saying we're going to eminent domain. We're going to acquire right-of-way as the first step, right?
Yeah, it's just declaring it necessary to, to like, right-of-way.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Deemer, I have a question for you. Does, the appraisers, those were already okay? Do ODOT correct, sir?
Correct.
Okay, that's my one. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution seventy-three, twenty-fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
An emergency resolution declaring the necessity and intention to appropriate for street purposes certain fee simple interests and easements in and to various premises along Route eighty-two to facilitate its widening and resurfacing, including drainage improvements and traffic control signals, further identified as PID eighty-one six-five-six, with the county route section number as sum, state Route eighty-two, four point six-five, and declaring an emergency.
And what's your pleasure?
I move we pass and post resolution number seventy-three, twenty-fourteen, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance seventy-four, two thousand fourteen.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number seventy-four, two thousand fourteen, for its first reading by title only, please.
Jan, if I may, I know we discussed this in work session, but I think this is the video equipment that we've been talking about.
Right, we haven't had a chance to talk about it, so, and we didn't talk, last time we talked about it, there was a lot of disagreements.
Okay, all right. So, we can hold it as first reading.
I think we need to have a discussion.
All right, thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement with income in order to upgrade the city's existing video equipment.
Next is ordinance number seventy-five, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, before I introduce ordinance seventy-five, two thousand fourteen, I'd like to ask Scott a couple of questions. It's my understanding that these are the purchase of the trucks that we approved in the, as part of the regular budget for this year?
Yes, sir.
And they're within the amount appropriated, so it's budget neutral. We've already-
Yes, the first payment will begin next year. This is a KeyBank contract that we have to have council approve, and then they'll put the money in escrow. The truck's already been ordered, and then they'll execute the final purchases of it.
Okay. Although, we haven't had a lot of the opportunity to, or we didn't have opportunity in work session, I think that because it's money that's been appropriated, I'm comfortable with offering it for a first, second, and third reading. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. With that, I'd offer ordinance number seventy-five, two thousand fourteen, for a first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
In ordinance, authorizing directing the mayor to execute, word is spelled incorrectly, and enter into a lease purchase agreement, that is, too, with Key Government Finance, Inc., in order to finalize the purchase of two T-three-hundred Kenworth trucks configured with snowplow packages from Henderson Equipment for use by the Macedonia Service Department.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance seventy-five, two thousand fourteen, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance number seventy-six, two thousand fourteen.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance seventy-six, two thousand fourteen, for its first reading by title only.
In ordinance, accepting from the Ohio EPA, a section three nineteen H non-point source implementation grant from the Lake Erie watershed to be used for the Macedonia Stormwater Innovation Park, and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement therefore.
And what's your pleasure? Oh, I'm sorry, that was first reading. Ordinance number seventy-seven, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number seventy-seven, two thousand fourteen, and I'm looking to see what this is, because we haven't discussed anything, so, let's see. Are we, are we going to be doing first, second, or third reading on this, though? Okay, we're going to do first reading. I'm going to offer it for first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a mutual aid agreement with the Summit Metro Crash Response Team.
Moving on to ordinance seventy-eight, two thousand fourteen.
I'm going to offer this for first, second, and third reading. If there's an objection? Any objection? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number seventy-eight, twenty-fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
In ordinance, appoint Frank Posar to the Planning Commission in order to fill a recent vacancy.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, could I ask Mr. Deemer a question on this one?
Sure.
Mr. Deemer, my question is not to suggest that I don't think Mr. Posar is qualified or a man of integrity, or a man that I wouldn't want to see sitting on the Planning Commission, because I think he's all three of those. But, I, it's, I know that he has some dealings with the Building Department, and I think inspection and things like that. Is that going to cause a conflict for him? He does do inspections for you, is that right? He doesn't anymore?
He retired.
He retired, so he doesn't do those at all? All right, then I'm going to re, I've answered my own question.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back. Did we, we-
Did we all agree for?
Yeah.
I read it, title. Now, if you choose to adopt it, that's-
Okay, all right. Now, we're into adoption. Good. Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance seventy-eight, twenty-fourteen, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Since I said all those nice things about Mr. Posar in my question, I guess I'm pretty obligated to say yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance number seventy-nine, two thousand fourteen.
Before I offer this ordinance, this is for the road striping marking. How much is in the appropriations now, and how much more would this be expending?
I'm sorry. The amount that's currently on there is one hundred and ten thousand, one sixty-two. We would have to make a transfer from one oh one funds to four oh one to complete this transaction.
So, we have the money. I mean, this is not optional, if I'm correct. Okay.
That's the effort for first.
Did we, but was this previously appropriated?
No, no.
Here.
Josephine pulled this for me.
Hey, Jim, did we do any marking last year, any?
No.
How about the year before that?
The last time we did marking was twenty-twelve, and we spent a little over fifty thousand.
And we didn't do the whole city, though.
And every year previous to that, we always spent anywhere from fifty to sixty thousand, every year, because it's every other year that we do the city. We do part of it, and then the following year, do another part of it. We haven't done it. So, what's happening is I'm starting to get a lot of complaints from, especially people, some of them not even residents, that they can't see the markings, especially like on Route eight and eighty-two. There's no more markings that show you the actual path you're supposed to follow. I have other areas where the, our markings are starting to fade. They're starting to rub away. And unfortunately, they're on some bad streets, too. People will probably get mad at me for marking, but we have to.
Isn't it federally mandated?
Yes.
And I actually took a class just about roadway marking, and know that that paint that's currently used is life expectancy of less than a year.
Right. That's why we do an every-other-year program. Twenty thirteen, we didn't, but previous to that, every year, at least fifty to sixty thousand was spent.
So, if I understand, this is an appropriation, at which point, if it's appropriated tonight, you're going to then go out for bids?
Yes, sir.
And we can't go out to bids until we appropriate it?
Yes.
In light of the fact that income is coming in significantly higher than what we thought, and there was even some discussion of attempting to do an extra road, I know that this is more than we paid, did in two thousand twelve, but I think, I think catching up makes sense, and it doesn't, it looks like it doesn't catch us up completely. And I know that some of the roads do need, need some striping, so I would, I would support this.
So, we can do in three readings?
I just wanted to make sure everyone had the answers, because we hadn't talked about it. I haven't done it yet.
So, you have offered it, Ms. Tully?
No, I have not.
No, not yet.
No, I got my questions on the table first.
Oh, okay. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Can you pass that down to her? Pass that down to her. Josephine pulled this for me, Jan, just prior to the meeting, is how much we paid the company there, fifty thousand, Durmark, in two thousand twelve.
Yeah, that was, that was twenty-twelve. That was Durmark. Previous year before, after that was fifty-two. The year before that was fifty-four. The year before that was sixty.
Okay.
But, we didn't do any last year.
Right.
And we didn't do none last year. So, I'm actually trying to catch up.
Right.
Now, next year, I'll probably ask you for fifty to sixty thousand, so we can continue where we left off.
Could I ask you why we didn't do it last year? That, we had the most money ever.
The money wasn't appropriated at that time.
Did you ask for it, and they didn't give it to you?
I wasn't involved in the budget in two thousand thirteen.
Okay, all right. Okay, okay. I'd like to offer ordinance number seventy-nine, two thousand and fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Oh, it would help if I read it. An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds from the unappropriated fund balance for the twenty-fourteen road striping marking program. Mr. Deemer, may I ask a question?
Sure.
May Ms. Tully add to that and authorize him to advertise for bids on this, or should it be a separate motion? If he's, she's-
It should be a separate motion.
Okay. So, remember to do that under motion.
Amend the motion, or make a separate motion?
Separate.
Okay.
Under, yeah.
So, I'd like to ask that we adopt and post according to law, ordinance number seventy-nine, two thousand and fourteen.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Before we move on, Mayor, may I also like to make a motion authorizing the Service Department to go out for bids for the two thousand fourteen road striping marking program.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Moving on, ordinance eighty, two thousand fourteen.
Sylvia?
I'll make a-
That's that supplemental on the breakdown. I don't, I'm going to-
Scott, we haven't had a chance in executive, our work session to discuss eighty. Would you please, which is appropriations, would you please explain what the appropriations are about?
Yes, sir. The legal fees, the first line is to be able to pay the contractor attorney his fees that are due relatively in August, when we get those July billings. We're estimating that, to be on the safe side, twenty-five thousand dollars. And the following line, supplies and materials to tree fund, we, I think I copied counsel on a lot of, and material about that, and we identified two transactions that were brought over in two thousand eleven and two thousand and twelve that were posted erroneously into the Planning Commission, and those two transactions were twenty-two thousand, five hundred. And I talked to the auditor, and we can make that adjustment ourself, but even when we make the adjustment, and the money goes back into the two twenty-three fund, I would still need counsel for this approval to make that appropriations, so Jim can decide to plant any more trees wherever he's got to go. And there's, we had a meeting earlier this week with the mayor and Mr. Diglatano and our arborist, and we're trying to figure out what, how to make that fund whole, because there's been some trees that were purchased, and they died, and then they were replaced, and so we're trying to straighten that out now. But, at least at the beginning of this, to get this problem solved, one, the first step is to take that twenty-two-five and put it back into the tree fund. And there were some trees that were actually, we overspent on some subdivisions, so we might have to actually invoice some of the subdivisions where we had planted more trees than what we had initially got in. So, the Route eighty-two phase-three engineering, three thousand dollars, that was originally in the budget.
Go ahead.
That was phase one?
That's phase one.
Okay. That was originally in the budget, and I had a purchase order in January, and that's mostly for GPD's work on that. And there was about two thousand dollars that was drawn out of that, and I had canceled that purchase order by error, because that was the same fund number that I was using for the Route eighty-two, or the Route two-seventy-one ramp. So, when we had another bill come through, and I already had closed that purchase order, I needed that three thousand dollars. So, it's budget neutral. The money's in the fund, but I needed to get that, so I don't get a citation from the auditor. The Ohio EPA litter grant was a grant that was done by Janelle, and she had written that early in spring, and that's for the two thousand and fifteen litter pickup, Spring Earth Day. So, we'll have dumpsters here, roll-off dumpsters, and educational materials, free tree handout. And so, they grant, they awarded us half now and then half upon completion. So, I want to put that money in the fund and appropriate, and just do a purchase order so we have that available for next year, because it's, some of the expenditures might come out as early as late fall, depending on what, however she manages that. And the last one, the big-ticket item, the four hundred thousand dollars, that's the Route eighty-two ODOT right-of-way acquisitions. Now, that's a twenty-eighty match, and originally, we have that money appropriated in a purchase order. Roughly, the estimate was going to be four hundred thousand. Our share would be eighty thousand dollars. But, we had a meeting with ODOT, and because we're acquiring those properties at first, the checks must come from the city of Macedonia. And John from ODOT said, "As soon as we cut those checks and then invoice him, he'll turn it around in a week." So, this is budget neutral. It's a matter of our, we're-